Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Education of Arancho Unified School District. The meeting of March 14, 2016. We're gonna go ahead and start with item number one. Call to order, the members of the school board. Aurora Villón present. José Lara.
Present.
Doctor Teresa Merino.
Present.
Ms. Rachel Canciola.
Here.
Mr. Gabriel Orozco is, will be coming a little bit late, he'll join us in a bit. Item one B, roll call members of the administrative cabinet, Mr. Mark Galindo.
Yeah.
Doctor Roxanne Fuentes.
Present.
Mr. Ruben Flutos.
Here.
Mr. Mark Matthews.
Here.
Mr. Stefan Nagivell.
Here.
Now if you can please join, join me. Please pledge allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, we're gonna move to item number three, adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda that has been presented to us of March 14, 2016?
Voted.
Second.
Let's take a vote, Ms. Canciola.
Yes.
Doctor Merino.
Yes.
Mr. Lara.
Yes.
Villón, yes. For to approve, the agenda is presented, one member still not here. Public comments on closed session items. We don't have a public at this point, so we'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session.
We're gonna go over to the next door. Take a break.
It's closed session.
Yeah, it's gonna reopen?
Then it's reopened after.
Sure.
You need to tell them?
No, we don't need to tell them. Welcome to the, to the special meeting of the Board of Education, the Arancho Unified School District, Board of Education, the meeting of March 14, 2016. And we will go to item number eight, public announcements of actions taken in closed session. Mr. Galindo?
Sure, Dr. Galindo, board members. So, in closed session, the board took action to issue notice of non-relection to a probationary certificate in an employee identified by number fifteen, colon, sixteen, colon, zero three dash zero one, pursuant to Education Code Section 44929.21B, effective at the end of the 2015-16 school year, and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was as follows: on a motion by Mr. Orozco, on a second by Mr. Lara, on a vote of five oh, the board approved the non-relection. Second, in the second employee, in closed session, the board took action to issue notices of non-relection to probationary certificate employees identified by number sixteen, fifteen, colon, sixteen, colon, zero three dash zero two, pursuant to Education, Education Code Section 44929.21B, effective at the end of the 2015-16 school year, and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was as follows: on a motion by Doctor Merino, on a second by Mr. Orozco, there were five ayes and zero nays. That was all, the information was closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Galindo. We will go on to public comments. We only have one card. Ms. Esther Mania.
Good evening, and the chair, the board's chief, and president. I'm just here to state my objection once again to the location for New Magnet High School. That will be located at Sardi Grove. This location has own gym, this location has own library, this location has not been included in the facilities master plan. So I just wanted to state my concerns once again. Glad to see that you guys are having a public hearing for the name proposal for the magnet high school. Just wondering why there wasn't a public hearing for the creation of the magnet high school. I'm not familiar with protocol, but my application would be great if you guys would, you know, were looking around. I know one of the reasons that you're having this magnet high school is to address declining enrollment. However, you guys are also addressing it by having the power one on it, and I feel that the, you don't have fidelity to some of the programs you already have. You started really strong saying that you were gonna be working on that power one because you're losing money there. However, I don't see anything in the schools anymore. You started strong saying, yeah, we're gonna reward the kids, and I haven't seen anything at our, at our schools. I follow you on social media, and I haven't seen anything, so that's why I'm putting that up. Lastly, I'm glad to see that you guys actually sent receipts on your advisory committees, and I hope that you guys continue with this process, because as I stated before, your creation of your ad hoc community is not transparent.
Thank you, Ms. Esther Mania. John, ideas?
Good evening, school board. I just came to voice a concern I have, and this concern is the fact that these meetings such as this are being publicized through the students of Arancho High School. Just look around, I'm pretty sure if this was more public, we would've had a full room. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comments. We'll go on to information items. Item 10A, presentation of vision for New Magnet High School, and Mr. Galindo will be taking care of that.
Yes, of course. While we're waiting for it to warm up, Mr. Vargas, who is the principal for the new magnet high school, unfortunately based on his doctoral program, had to defend his, Dr. Quintez.
Research proposal.
Thank you. And he had actually been putted it off a couple of times based on different things going on in the district, and they finally said, no, you have to go. So Alvaro Rosso would've been here. So he's asked me to follow through on the presentation for the magnet high school and the naming process and the advisory committee at this point, and that's what I will do. So with that, we'll go to the next slide. So the advisory committee and process, and this is similar process we've used with the other naming of our different schools. This was a little bit different because it's a new school, but on February 23, cabinet met with Mr. Vargas to discuss the formation of advisory committee for the name of the new high school. According to our board policy 711, an advisory committee was to be created under the direction of the superintendent that encouraged school and community representation. At that meeting, we basically said, let's take the students and parents from the three middle schools who will ultimately be the ones who could feed into the new magnet high school, and let's identify parents and students from those three schools. So what we did, and the reason for it, was to choose from the different parts of our city, north side of the city, center part of the city, and also the south end of the city. Each parent was asked to bring their middle school student to this committee, the idea that these families represent the potential school community at the new magnet high school. Go on to the next slide. So during the week of February 23, the school principal reached out to multiple families within the city, and also to our principals of our three middle schools, to identify parents and students who would be part of this. Once they had identified the parents who would be part of this committee, meeting was scheduled for March 4, 2016. Just to let you know, we also put out an invitation to the Arancho Federation of Teachers, and they declined to be part of this committee and the naming committee. We also put out an invitation to our union partners, the CSEA, they also declined to be part of this committee. We put out an invitation to ERASA, which is our, the Association for Management Employees, and they sent Mr. Genus, who was the president of ERASA, to this committee, so they agreed to be part of the committee. The committee was informed in writing that they would be responsible for creating a recommended school name, mascot, and school colors. Each individual in the committee was encouraged to bring potential names and ideas to the meeting for discussion. On Friday, March 4, the committee met for approximately two and a half hours, and at that time, there were 21 named suggestions. From those 21 named suggestions, they identified the top two suggestions that would be presented to cabinet for discussion and recommendation. Cabinet met on March 8, and Mr. Vargas presented the names formally to cabinet. Based on the names presented, I am recommending one name we brought forward for the naming for this new school. And this is the recommended name for the new school, the California Academy of Arts, Science, and Engineering. It is reflective of the same focus which the school will have, and many of our schools have within our district, and the committee and cabinet felt the same was a great reflection of the vision for our new magnet high school, as well as for our students. Let you know, in relation to the mascot and school colors, the mascot will be the Hawks. Symbolic of flight, vision, foresight, intelligence, and focus. School colors, at this point, they're still trying to narrow it down, but they've narrowed it down to two groups of colors. Those of you based on your school affiliation may have a feeling of one word or the other, but looking at this point, I don't see any blue and gold up here, but I do see dark, red, and white. And I see dark, red, and gold. At this point, Mr. Vargas has asked the marketing company who's working with us, NTS Communications, to do a mock-up of the Hawk and the color scheme, and then from there, that committee's gonna come back together, and they're going to make a selection as far as which color scheme they wanna go with. At this point, that is the end of the presentation. This is, and then we will be having a public hearing right after this for the school name and anything related to that. That's it at this point. Any questions, anything, any questions?
I just have one. The marketing company was hired to do marketing for Arancho High School. Mr. Vargas has asked them to do some work for him for this new school. What is that gonna cost?
Don't know yet. What we did is, the marketing company was not just meant for the high school, that's where we wanted them to start off. We believe that based on everything happening at the high school, it's a great place to start, but the really good goal is, is that we develop communication material for every single one of our schools. We currently have a contract with NTS Communications, I believe, for up to an amount, and the amount, I believe, is approximately $65,000 or $70,000. And then based on that amount, if we need to come back for more, we'll be coming back to the board for, for assistance in that area.
Okay, Mr. Galindo, so just, just to make sure I'm clear, $65,000 or $65,000 was specifically for the high school, and so if they're willing to do the work for $6,500, then it's, right now, it's covered in that initial cost. If they need more money, you'll come back to the board to ask for more money?
That's correct, but again, it was not just meant for the high school.
Well, that's fine, I, I, thank you for the clarification today.
Doctor Merino?
I just wanna say that Mr. Vargas and the committee has done an awesome job. I think the name is, it's just outstanding. It resonates with what the focus is for the magnet school, the disciplines of the steam academy. In addition to that, it connects everyone to the Casey, we're familiar with this. It calls for, for rigor and for high standards, et cetera, et cetera. I think, you know, the Hawks again speaks to everything else, but I do have a comment to say on the colors, and I highly recommend that we go with the gold and blue.
No, that's not blue.
Is changing? No, no, I'm changing. I'm a Bruin fan, so. But at the same time, the parents and the students that are part of the committee are parents that definitely want the magnet school, and, and I think this is absolutely something we all need to hear, because I know there are many parents and families and students out there that wanna go to the magnet school, and this is, this is something that, it's already given its structure for most of us that are visual, to begin to see how it's unfolding, and so, you know, we're off to a good start. I did have the opportunity to visit the new site. Yes, as we have heard from comments, there, you know, there are many areas that we need to look at, but it has a potential, and if we channel our energy and our efforts, it's gonna be great, great agreements.
Mr. Lara?
Sure, so what was the other name that was submitted for, for consideration, the other final listing?
Sure, Alan Ochoa Prep.
Any other questions, Mr. Orozco?
Couple things. First of all, I like, I like the name, I concur with, I don't really know about what it represents. Even more so, I like the mascot and the school colors. And I like, I like the school colors, particularly the red, because the Hawks that you see around here are red-tailed hawks, and Hawks are indigenous to this area, much like native people, much like our ancestors. So I like that connection with, in terms of, 'cause I always, I always like keeping it real, and we see, when we see Hawks, Hawks, it's a good thing, you know, number one, they're not extinct, number two, you know, they, they take care of small rodents around the neighborhoods in the area. But I'm very, very pleased with this. I didn't, I didn't, I was really surprised how universal this, this title is and what it represents, it's a lot of things. I do think we should stick with the, the red and gold, not because I like those colors, but the red represents the indigenous, reds represent indigenous nations. The red also represents the red-tailed hawks, which are indigenous to this land. And the gold is also representative of the, there used to be both here, and it also represents the earth. In addition, white is already part of Arancho, and I want Arancho to keep it to blue and white, that belongs to the ARHS. I'm very happy with this, this selection.
Also to go with, with the gold, when missionaries came to settle California and as well as other places of the United States, they, they planted the mustard seeds all throughout California, and that's where you see the gold flowers, so that it's also very native to California, the gold flowers that grow wild. Anyway, just wanted to add that. It's a mystery.
Sure, so, I, I just, I'm having trouble with the name, I just wanna be honest with you, partly because of what Doctor Merino says, 'cause it reminds me of the Casey, which is an outdated test that we don't give anymore, right? What's it called? It's Case High School. And that just doesn't have a good ring to it, to me, it's like, I go to Case High School. If I'm a, if I'm a young eighth grader, do I wanna go to Case High School? I understand that it has an acronym, it's an acronym, but at the same time, we know that, that names get shortened, especially long names, like the one that we're being, what we're selecting here, the California Academy of. Art, Science, and Engineering, right? So, so if it doesn't get shortened to Case High School, people are shorting it by calling it Cal High, or something like that, 'cause it starts with California, 'cause essentially we are calling it California High School, or California Academy, and there is already a California High School in the area, which gives another negative to the name. I, I, I think the name of Alan Ochoa is actually a really good name, in particular because Alan Ochoa was the first Latina astronaut to go into, to go into outer space. She was also a flutist, she also was an artist as well, she liked to practice, practice the arts as well. She was a graduate of Cal State San Diego, went on to Stanford University, she ran many prestigious awards, and she, what's called, is really a role model that we can really highlight in our community, they say, hey, look, we want you to shoot for the stars, we want you to be like Alan Ochoa, somebody that, what's it called, a woman who broke many barriers, just being a woman, being a scientist in particular, then being a Latina and breaking those barriers, I mean, from Mexicana, from Mexican descent, is something I think very inspirational. And when I was, when I was, what's called, looking up, you know, some of the things about her, and some of the things that she's done, et cetera, and her coming back and giving back to the community, and giving speeches around the country, and encouraging other young Latinas and Latinos, and everybody in general, I don't wanna just focus on those two groups, but to, to proceed to go to higher heights, I mean, I think it speaks volumes to me as somebody that we can name a school after, that can, that can really inspire a lot of people in our community, and it elevates another person in our community, which we rarely have opportunities to, to do. I really think that we have an opportunity with Alan Ochoa, calling it Ochoa High School, Ochoa Prep Academy High School, really signifies its difference, it could be something they could relate to. And so I'm, I'm really kinda conflicted with this, because I understand the marketing value of a Case High School, right, or a California Academy High School, I understand that, but I also understand that, you know, if we do marketing correctly, having Alan Ochoa as the name of the high school can also be marketed highly as well, when we include some of the other language in our marketing materials, et cetera. But because of, because those two names forwarded, and I know there was one recommendation made by the cabinet, now before the board for our, for our vote, I really think we should've kinda democratized the process a little bit more, and put the two names that the selection committee couldn't kind of, like, make a final decision on, and allow the public to, to decide the final name. I think it'll help us create some more buy-in into the whole process of having a magnet school in our area, and if we'd like put it up on our website and ask people to do an online vote for five days or something like that, it'll open up the process a little bit more, to say, okay, so what does the general public, you know, how would they feel about something like this? Which of the names would they prefer? The high school doesn't belong to us in particular, it belongs to the community. And so I, I would be really in favor of doing something like that, like, you know, opening it up. I mean, I personally would prefer something like Alan Ochoa versus Case High School, but I, I'm, I'd rather than, what's more important to me than either, than either the names is that we create buy-in for the, for the magnet high school, and we allow the opportunity for, as much, as much as possible, given our short timeframe, for the community to weigh in on what they prefer.
Mr. Lara has pointed out some very good points, and, and be the Monday morning quarterback. Well, maybe not so difficult, but I'm here as a Monday morning quarterback, and basically talking about a lot of work that people that were vested in this took the time to come to this community. I don't necessarily support the name California, only because California High School and Whittier is so close. Their mascot is a condor, both the condor and the Hawks are birds of prey. And it would also, not very, in my opinion, humble it, that if the, in the event, the board had a change of heart, that, that name would be very difficult to follow the magnet school back to the Arancho High School school site, in the event, that would be a future option. However, when we asked people to participate, and we asked them to take time out of their busy day, which was two and a half hours, they came up with several names, and this is what they decided, so now, because we would like to have something different or consider a different option, are we gonna go back and reconsider another name? I really do support Mr. Lara's support and the comments he made regarding Alan Ochoa, but at this point, the whole purpose of the committee was to have community involvement. This was the community that Mr. Galindo selected, and, or through Mr. Vargas, however the process was, and so now they come forward with the, with the name after all their hard work. So, you know, I just wanted to point out that when you're sitting there and you're doing all the work, and then you come before the board and the board says, this is really great, but maybe not so much, and you, and you take into consideration another, another name, then a natural progression for the community may be, well, if you, if you reconsidered on the name, can you reconsider on the location of the magnet school? So, Mr. Lara brings in a lot of good arguments and a very good discussion, but I wanted to point that out, because where, where are you gonna stop or start? You know, where, where are you gonna stop? Are you gonna reconsider the location of the magnet school, which would make community happy, would, it would get buy-in, it would do everything that Mr. Lara said, and as the name would, as supportive the name would imply. So I would just want, I just wanted to point out that there are a lot of people that were working here, and I know this board has reconsidered things in the past, and I would ask them to reconsider the location, and then I could support it, maybe a name of, a different name, like an Alan Ochoa astronaut at Arancho High School. So, that's, I just needed to voice my, my position. Thank you.
I, I, thank you, Ms. Canciola. I also think that we have established a process by which a high school, I mean, a high school, a school is named, like the process we follow for the academy at Burt, or for the other academies that, or schools that were renamed, and we basically have been true to that process. And I hear what Mr. Lara's saying, and I think he's making a lot of good points, and if we move forward with the name that committee has selected as the final name, then nothing would prevent us from doing a mural, dedicating some part of the school to, if that's what the community of the school would like, to Mr. Ochoa, and that's just another possibility. Mr. Orozco?
Well, I was, I, I like the California Academy, but we only get one chance, and we are in LA, we are representative of LA County, we put it out basically as our demographics call for us, for somebody who represents us, and slowly but surely, we are taking over the state student population like we have, relating and teachers and professionals, professionals that we are still underrepresented in, in college, we're still underrepresented in many professional positions, and here's an opportunity, 'cause I didn't know there was, I didn't know the other name that you brought up, this is my first time being exposed to this. So I'm, I'm, at first, I mean, I like everything, but you made a great point, and so I would be more apt to support that, and Alan Ochoa, or one, can we combine it and?
No, order, that's not on the agenda.
So then either we approve it or don't, basically?
We don't approve until tomorrow.
So we're just gonna have it formed? So can we?
Yeah, this is a public hearing. Well, I'm going to go to the 11A, which is a public hearing, I'm gonna open it up.
This is my first time.
I just wanna make one direction, the committee brought forth two names. One was the Alan Ochoa Prep Academy, the second one was the California Academy of the Arts and Science, so to Ms. Canciola's point, the committee brought, brought forth two names, and as was, was presented in the PowerPoint, the cabinet selected one of those names to report to the board. So the people who were actually working on this name couldn't decide amongst themselves, so they brought two names forward to the, to the board, and I, I just wanna correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding of what, what happened, and then the board brought forth one name to, to us for approval.
Is that correct?
Mr. Amerino? Committee asked to name spot before cabinet, for cabinet to make the decision which one to report, and they did not decide, so that's what cabinet did.
And I'd like to say something that.
Well, thank you. Well, I'm hearing this for the first time, Mr. Lara, so, and I understand that the committee took it to the cabinet to make a decision, but I would like to have had that information. So I think that perhaps we should have that opportunity. To review, to evaluate?
Well, to review, to evaluate, well, because, you know, we're hearing for the first time, and just listening to my colleagues here, there's something else that could happen. Not to minimize the decision the cabinet made.
Sure.
Okay. But it certainly, you know, caught my attention, and said, oh, we didn't move forward, so there were two names that were undecided, so, yeah.
Well, I just, I just want to share that although I think both names are worthwhile of, you know, high school, I, I like the California, because it's, it tells you everything that that school stands for, it seems to be inclusive, although I. Although I, like Mr. Lada and Mr., and all of you I'm hearing, advocate for us to move forward with naming our schools after a particular individual, I think that, when I think of the transformation we are trying to create in Arachio, I mean, in our school district, I'm thinking of inclusiveness. And I'm thinking of other people that may be drawn. If you have a California school, we're putting it on the map, this is a school, and then you include the arts and the engineering and the science, that's really catchy. When you say, I go to California Academy of the Arts and Sciences and Engineering, that's a catchy name. Not to minimize Ellen Ochoa, but to me, when I'm thinking of marketable, I think of the engineering and science, and I'm just thinking marketing our district. Another concern that I have is that when you bring forward names that are very worthy of being recognized, like Ms. Ochoa, and unfortunately, I'm quite ignorant, because when I heard about the name, I didn't know who she was, and that's my ignorance. But then I started thinking of someone like Gina Gregón, who we opened a school for him, but now it's closed, and now it's a probation department, and I was just, you know, concerned how the community would feel about having that school closed, and here we're naming a school after someone else. But then after understanding what she's done, she is amazing, but I do like the sound of the engineering, science, and everything else for the California Academy.
Will you put a form status?
No, let's do it now. Let's move to 11. At this point, I'm opening the public hearing for name proposals for the magnet high school. Under topic. Okay? Public hearing closed.
So I just want to, I mean, we don't vote on it until tomorrow, but two things to consider would be combining the two names, which would be like the Ochoa Academy of Arts, Science, and Engineering, that line, or my preferred option would actually be to democratize the process and let's do an online voting process and let the community decide, you know, do a five-day window, by Monday we'll have a name, something of that sort. But, I mean, I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around a Case or a California High School in our city. That's all.
Mr. Orozco's question. If we're going to do something like that, does that set us back in terms of what we need to do to get this thing going? I mean, I don't want to rush it, but because when you name something, it's there forever. There's no, you know, you can't back it. I think so, so that's why I'm asking. So my preference is to not do that, personally, because we're already here, but what would that mean in terms of logistics for getting this school going?
Basically, what it does, it depends on when we would say the vote, if you wanted to take a vote of some kind, it's a tense week. So we run all votes in by Sunday or Monday, tally the votes. You guys have a special board meeting, have a special board meeting, then you decide to either accept or not accept what the community has done. So basically, what it does, it puts a fact in a week.
In your conversations, I'm sorry, Dr. Merino.
Okay. We, I don't want to delay anymore, because we're in a very, very tight timeline, and, you know, we have magnesium, well, you know, let's move it forward. I think that out of respect for the time and effort from the committee and the cabinet, let's just, let's move it forward. I know that if we delayed anymore, we can't apply for a CBS code until we have a name. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's going to set us back. I, from what I'm hearing here, you know, this name does resonate and does carry weight in terms of the marketing, in terms of attracting students, so I'm going to recommend not to delay anymore. Let's move forward, let's move it.
Mr. Orozco?
I know, so can we, combinations that have to be that? I mean, is it set in stone, it has to be California Academy? Because I respectfully disagree with Dr. Merino, that we cannot market it. We can still market an Ellen Ochoa even more so, because by going and calling it Ellen Ochoa or California Academy, Ellen Ochoa is California whatever, put her name on it, we're actually promoting, promoting Latinas in general, Mexican-American, Latin, for that matter, to our own city, and we're actually asking our own students to go to our own city to recognize this person. Because if you ask anybody who's changing over voters, I don't think any people are going to know who that person is. And I used to practice there when I was a kid, I don't know who that person is. And so the thing about it is, is, you know, we have Salazar Park was renamed, we have Sisypchalis Street that was renamed, Sisypchalis. And there are kids who don't know who Sisypchalis is, unfortunately. But when they hear it and see it, they'll come to know who that is. And I think somebody like Ellen Ochoa, who is top-notch, and we're talking, you know, out of class, so I'm asking, you know, can we combine it? So it's not, is that within the realm of possibility, or?
Well, I think that we would really need to be back to the committee. I don't want to, I don't want to compromise what the committee has done. And I think probably, what is attractive to me of the name that has been brought forward is the arts, science, and engineering. I really like that part of it, but I would not feel that it's right or fair for us to, us meaning the board, to say, oh, we want to change that in this manner. The only way I see that happening is if Mr. Vargas gets the committee back together and the committee decides, because I really would not want to, not validate the work that the people have put in to do this. And it's also, they basically follow the same process we have followed in the past. And I don't want to jeopardize that or for them to feel like, well, why did we do that if now there are these concerns? And I don't know, Mr. Alino, you want to add anything?
Yeah.
Because you have worked more closely with what has been happening than any of us.
Right. So I think, first of all, I don't think there's any doubt that when we heard both names, there was a lot of discussion about both names, the value of both names. I personally felt that the concept of the California Academy of Arts, Science, and Engineering could be something that would be very inclusive, but also be very open. One of the goals, I believe, of the magnet school we're trying to do is keep kids in our district, attract kids who've never been in our district but who live in Pico de Vera. And I believed that the California Academy of Arts, Science, and Engineering was the name that could do it better than the other name. They're both awesome names. There's no doubt about it. So, but given that in relation to the name in itself and the commitment that came together, I think what I'd like to do, because one of the purposes of a public hearing is to hear just what we're hearing. And even though we didn't, the public, the board has the opportunity to also weigh in and provide information and opinion. What I would like to be able to do, it's okay with the board, is I would like to have a conversation with Mr. Vargas tomorrow, let him know some of the thoughts of the board. He may be able to bring the committee back together quickly, or maybe not. And maybe to offer some of the information that the board has talked about, and then maybe let the committee have an opportunity, if they can by tomorrow, great, because we can always modify the information at the board meeting tomorrow, and/or say, you know what? They're still, they're still, we're confident in relation to the two names, and that's all they want to be considered. Who knows? I'm not sure what they would say at this point. I do want to, I do want to make sure that we do take and respect what they did in this process, and also what cabinet did too, because we took time in talking about this also. But then, again, bottom line is, the board is the one that ultimately approves or does not approve the name for the new school. So if we have that time tomorrow, I'm going to see if we can get that done tomorrow, but if not, I'll move that information forward tomorrow at the board meeting. And at that point, we have an opportunity to either move forward with either yes or no on the California Academy of Arts, Science, and Engineering, and to vote yes or no, and/or to maybe modify the name prior to the board approving the agenda. Okay? Or even approving the item. Maybe what it is, maybe the item would be both names, and at that point, the board has an opportunity to have a discussion about one or both, and then at that point to make recommendations, just like for a board item. Right? So that's possible. I want to look at, what's the best way to do it for tomorrow?
Well, whatever we do, the committee needs to be...
Yes, correct, exactly.
Mr. Orozco, and then Mr. Lada, and then everyone.
At the end.
The comment I want to make is that we use Ellen Ochoa or we use a name that's different. It doesn't mean it's not all-inclusive and really wants us to get away from that, that kind of thinking or mentality if we use a Latino name that we're, that is specific to only that group. It is in terms of what our role model is and our role models that we have, but it doesn't mean like, it's not all-inclusive by the word California. I really, I really think that the mentality, at least my perspective on it, is that it does reach across, because it certainly have, you know, George Washington Day, and you have, you know, my wife works at Bill Clinton Middle School, and nobody, only Latinos, mostly Latinos and African-Americans go to that school. And that doesn't mean it's not inclusive, because it has a European link to many of our names too. But the fact of the matter is, I want us to, I would like for us to think in terms of, why can we take one? But my perspective is, does it limit, as we put a Latino or a Spanish journey or indigenous thing, limits its marketability? And I think the opposite, that it actually creates more of a diversity pool.
Mr. Lada?
Sure. So, I mean, I know there's a lot of hesitancy on this, but I would definitely, you know, recommend also to talk to the committee about, what do they think about opening it up to the community through some online voting process, where the community can vote for which name they feel is important. And I would even put, what's called, both these two names and one that combines both of them out there. Because I think, I mean, there is some value to, you know, having the name of Arts, Science, and Engineering within the title name, there is some value to that. But there's also some value of having, you know, a person like Ellen Ochoa, you know, who graduated from her high school, you know, went on to Cal-Two, to San Diego State, you know, what's called, Stanford, what's it called, became an engineer robotics, I mean, she was manning, look at the word I'm using, right? She was controlling the robot arms out there in outer space, and to hear her story is, I mean, quite frankly, is inspirational. And, you know, as a father, like, and as daughters, like, I want, you know, like my daughter would say, look at somebody like that and say, hey, look, and not just be men all the time. That's another issue, is like, you know, it's always men, it's always men. And so, so anyways, I mean, I just think that that would create more inclusivity at the same time. But I don't have a problem with democratizing it. I know it would put us back a week, but technically it wouldn't, because a lot of marketing materials can still be created, using our mascot, using, you know, the themes, et cetera. I mean, the last thing that we put on is the name at the very end.
Ms. Cantola? Yes, I, you know, I just would like to caution the board that democratizing, or I don't think I would get it correctly, is a great fundamental idea of what this whole process is by having board members of, like, the community to sit here and make decisions for the community. And it's really quite unfortunate that we don't have a community here to discuss this very issue. But I think that we will be opening up Pandora's Box if you choose to democratize the name and not the location, because it's, I mean, I don't, I would mind opening it up and reconsidering the location. And I don't know that a hawk would be consistent with an Ellen Ochoa name anyways, because she's an astronaut. So we need to have some type of science or rocket ship or some type of, of future type of image to go with that name. And I just, you know, I just want to caution the board that you are, you may be opening up a Pandora's Box, and I know we don't like having people come in and complain about a process, but if you allow it for one issue regarding this magnet school especially, and not another issue regarding the magnet school, you're just opening yourself up to criticism and to unwarranted criticism, because it doesn't have to be that way, it doesn't have to go that way. The cabinet made a decision, so either we vote yes or we vote no. And if we vote no, then we put it on the agenda to name the school and we can move on. But to keep talking about this and going over it and over it, it doesn't solve the issue that we haven't had. So I would just like to say that the public hearing is open. I've heard these great statements about Ellen Ochoa. There's probably hundreds, if not thousands, of other great Latinos that are out there that are successful, but I'm not going to bring any of them up, because that's not my position. My position is to either approve or not approve. So I would just like to move on at this point.
And I think the public hearing was closed already.
Exactly.
So...
There's no one here.
Exactly. So at this point, we will...
Oh, I'm so sorry, you are here.
At this point, do I have a motion to adjourn our open session meeting and then we can go into closed session?
A little.
So, Ms. Cantola?
Yes.
Dr. Merino?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Lada?
Yes.
Alino, yes, we'll go back to closed session.